Okay, I want to call the special town council meeting of April 23rd to order. A moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item and only item, uh, contested to discuss and consider setting Monday, April 30th, 2018, as a special town council meeting for the purpose of holding an executive session under Rhode Island general law section 42-46-5A7. This was requested by councillor Capaldi.
Mr. President, maybe I can explain, uh, under the town charter, um, there's two ways to call for a special meeting of the town council, it's section 3140, these and that. Uh, it says, "A special meeting of the town council may be called by the town clerk at the request of either the town council president or a majority of the members of the town council." So what that means is that, uh, if the council president doesn't call for a special meeting, it has to be a majority of the council, uh, to have a special meeting. So that would require three votes to carry any affirmative. So basically all we can do tonight, based on the agenda that was posted, which is just whether or not to schedule a meeting on, a special meeting on Monday, April 30th, uh, is a motion to either do that or not do that.
Um, I'm lost. I, I have no idea what's going on, but we have a workshop, the planning board, they're away.
Yeah, no, there's, there's one proceeding.
All right, councilor. Yes. We have a single.
No, we're meeting. This should be two, this should be two. This one plus one other one.
Oh, let me see.
That's the first part, portion at 6:20, and then the workshop is proceeding immediately following.
Yeah, we're not ready for that yet. So you just need to know that we're having a meeting with it? What do we want, like, to have that considered session?
And then a motion to do the second meeting.
A motion to do not have a meeting on the 30th, for example, session. Thank you.
May I, may I, may I add more information?
No, no, it's not finished.
Oh, why don't we go, yeah, uh, Barbara will be here for that meeting.
I assume that's, that's the date she, she set, but...
I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
There's no, is there a second to Sylvia's motion? Oh, my motion was to not have a meeting on the 30th.
Can I make a second? Can I make a second? Okay, I'll, I'll second it. All those in, all those agreeing with Sylvia and I, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those not agreeing, say no.
No.
So we want to have a meeting?
Yeah, the motion fails because to call a meeting or...
You need, yeah.
You need three votes.
Right, so we want a meeting now, not yet.
Okay, now we can get on with the workshop, sorry for the delay. A big bit of housekeeping, Barbara. Yeah, work, may I, please, can you open, do you mind, I have a very urgent agenda. The workshop, do we even have a separate workshop agenda?
Yes.
Thanks, appreciate it. Do you have Jenny's name, Hornsby?
Oh, this is, that was it, our data.
That's it.
Okay, okay, okay. So we want to open a workshop to discuss and consider the following. Proposed revisions to the solar ordinances. We have in, in the council chambers, the planning board members, with the exception of, I think, Bill. Correct? Tom?
Tom.
I'm sorry, Tom. Just one, okay. And all the council folks, except Barbara, she's under the case. I think what we'll do is, um, the planning board requested the meeting with the council, and I'll refer the initial comments over to Al Diorio, the chairperson of planning, to kind of outline what we want to talk about and how we want to, kind of, out. So, thank you very much. So we appreciate the opportunity to come before you and outline some of our concerns. Maybe just a few general comments to help clarify where we're going and hopefully it meets with your, your incurrence. So, as, as you're aware, of course, the planning board has been inundated with applications for solar projects, both non-residential and under the farm liability laws. And I'm hoping that what we can do this evening is present you with an overview of our concern, concerns, without necessarily delving into the details. How we get from here to the details could very well be the topic of perhaps another workshop, perhaps we'd like to mark off the ordinances with precise language, give that to you for your review. But my hope this evening is not necessarily to drill down into those details, because we could be here for hours. There are folks in the audience, I'm sure everyone has some input that they'd like to share, I'd like to give you an opportunity to hear all of those. So that would be my hope. A second item, as we stand here before you this evening, the various members of the planning board, these would be individual comments. I attempted to, uh, gather up, uh, the comments from all of the members, so as to present them to you in a more formalized fashion, but that simply didn't work. So, in terms of written comments, you had something from myself, you had something from Amy Williams, uh, the other members may choose to chime in in a little bit more informal fashion. Sounding good so far?
Sounds good.
So in terms of my own comments, I've had the opportunity to work with, I can't tell you how many ordinances over the years that I've served on the planning board. It seems to be a characteristic or a theme that runs through them, that we start an ordinance with some type of vision, something that we think is good for the community. We craft that vision into language that eventually becomes an ordinance, and that ordinance then becomes implemented, applicants begin to use the ordinance, and low and behold, we have projects hopping up out of the ground. Doesn't matter whether it's a subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, in this case a solar ordinance, the characteristic is always the same. And many times, we don't really know if we've got that vision right until the projects stop coming out of the ground. Again, it's just one of those characteristics of an ordinance. Sometimes you just don't know if you've got it right until it starts to happen. So I think, in my opinion, is we have one of those instances here. We had a great vision, we put an ordinance or set ordinances together, now we're beginning to see the ordinance implemented, and this whole array of other concerns seems to present itself. I had the opportunity to review these ordinances before they were implemented, and I just would not have thought that some of these concerns were going to be so upfront in my face. So, I point those out to you. One of my greatest concerns so far has been the amount of clearing that's going on with these various projects. And I really feel that there's got to be a better way to get a handle on the amount of clearing that we're prepared to allow for these types of projects. I think an idea might be to include lot coverage as one of the criteria that governs just how much of a site can be covered with these structures. So a solar panel, by definition, is a structure, lot coverage addresses structures, it might be logical to include that as one of the limiting criteria. One of the thoughts that I put forth. We need to include something regarding fencing. I'd like to think that we have this almost under control, but it seems that at every meeting, the planning board is grappling with the type of fence, the color of the fence, the height of the fence, all we really do, need to do is set forth some more precise specifications, so that the applicants, as they come forth, have a better idea of what the town is looking for. Talked a little bit about the land clearing, right now, the language governing the amount of land clearing is just vaguely on belief, and it just needs to be strengthened, I've given you one idea that might help clarify that. Another issue that needs attention is the criteria for the project mapping that comes before us. Right now, there's a very small section on what types of maps, uh, the applicant should be bringing forth. Keep in mind that the map, the plan, is what the planning board is using to render its decision, and if those maps are at a poorly designed scale, if those maps are prepared by individuals and might not have the proper authority to prepare them, or cannot certify properly to their precision, the planning board is basing its decisions on some pretty sketchy material. Now, my recommendation is, again, I think it's pretty simple, the land development subdivision regulations have very tight criteria for the development plans. All we need to do is incorporate that kind of information into these ordinances, and in my opinion, problem solved. We've already been through it once, when we designed all those regulations, we need not be created again. I have a small comment on landscaping plans, it's included in our ordinance, I'm fairly certain that landscape plans need to be prepared by a registered landscape architect, I do not think that's happening in many cases, so we need to just tighten up that portion of the regulation. Same thing with as-built plans, I'm fairly certain that as-bills can only be done by PLSs, the regulatory ordinance doesn't specifically state that, ordinance needs to be tightened There is a section on maintenance, and my only concern here is that, uh, we spend a lot of time about talking, uh, taking these installations down at the end of their useful life, but there is nothing in the maintenance section that sets forth a penalty for failing to adhere, or not keeping the site in proper condition, et cetera. So if there's no penalty in the applicant, or the owner chooses not to do this, where does that leave the town? I think we need to do an insert here. And lastly, with regards to the, uh, non-residential ordinance, we have a section on removal, and, uh, it makes, uh, it makes a statement, something to the effect that the state, the property will be restored to the state that it was in before the facility was constructed. Couple of times I've called the applicant on this, suggesting that that means they're going to put all the trees back to the way. And of course, that's not what anybody thinks restoration is, and perhaps they're correct, but that means that our ordinance should properly reflect what we, the town, think proper restoration is. And then my last concern has to do with the farm-based water vault area, and I certainly am an advocate of doing whatever we can do for those that utilize these facilities on their, their farms, and if it does something to help them out, I'm okay with it, but we need to be cognizant that just because it's quote, "farm-based," does not give everybody the right to throw all the regulations out the door and say, "Well, it's a farm, so I should be allowed to do it." These are essentially a commercial use that we are allowing on residential properties. Tom Hoakden was one of the first folks on the planning board to point this out, and he voted against many of the projects as a result of this. My only point in bringing this to your attention is that if we're going to allow commercial use on a residential piece of property, those applicants need to be cognizant of that, and they need to step up. And that means do the job right and adhere to all of the same regulations that everyone else does. All that I have for you this evening. Again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to present, I'm sure the planning board members will follow along. Thanks, Al, appreciate it.
I think you have a senior topic. I'd have to say that, uh...
Excuse me, I don't think we got anything for me, unless you could tell us...
Oh, that's, oh, okay, that's great, okay. Forgot about that. But I could say that in, um, getting all of the applicants at the planning board, the planning board is not opposed to solar, we're just not opposed to solar everywhere, and that the specific site matters a lot. And, uh, so I guess a lot of my concerns has to do with the siding of the solar projects, and, um, we truly understand carbon footprint, we're all intelligent people, and we understand the, the impact and the benefit of bringing solar to Hopkinton, but I'm not sure that it should go everywhere. So, a lot of my concerns come from that, and deciding, so I mirror what Al said regarding how much land should be used, and whether or not we need to say that a maximum of 30% of the land, um, for lot coverage, and what is lot coverage? Is that the attachment of the solar panel, or is that the actual area of the solar panel projected down? And I think we should be very specific, um, not, is it just because the applicant will use the attachment to the ground for their calculations for soil runoff? But is that what we really intend? Or when you see a whole field covered in solar panels, are you thinking, "Well, it's just that little bit there that's attached?" No, you're not, you're thinking it's the whole field covered in solar panels. So I think we need to be clear about what do we mean by coverage. And another thing that struck me was that, uh, in reading the Eco Rhode Island article, was the comment about the blasting. And it occurred to me in our last planning board meeting, when there was discussion of how these solar panels are attached, they actually drill or force a beam down six to eight feet, um, in order to attach them for hurricane ridge, you don't want them floating away, um, which I don't think we quite realized, that they were going to have to go so far down into the ground to secure the solar panels. And so there's lots of different ways, and then in reading the Eco Rhode Island, um, article, there was discussion, in order to get these posts down, sometimes they blast. And I have a problem with allowing applicants to come into Hopkinton, put in an environmentally friendly, um, energy source, and blast over potential offer. So I have a problem, and I would just like to be very specific, that if we allow people to come into Rhode Island, um, Hopkinton to do that, I would like them not to blast in order to attach the solar panels, because I think that's good stewardship of, of, of Hopkinton. Especially because, as we all know, we're on wells, and that's all we need, is to have a lot of blasting and impact our hydrology. And so this kind of goes, the blasting sort of goes to the specific ground attachment. And another, um, another concern that has been brought up numerous times is the environmental impact regarding to wildlife migration and habitat changes, and obviously, this is not for the one acre parcels, um, but it's for the larger projects, where you're going to put a fence around 70 acres, 100 acres of, of land, and that's really going to impact the wildlife. So I would like us to include within our ordinances that a study needs to be done, just in order to have a field, because maybe it doesn't make the livings a difference, I, but maybe it does. And so I think that it would just be good stewardship, um, for our ordinances to include that. And the other thing is regarding the need to definitely include what we, one about noise, noise is always a sense of good stewardship of being a good neighbor, do we care about the noise at the property line, do we care about the noise so many feet, trying to deter? I think we should be specific of, of what that noise level should be. And, um, as Mr. Dior's already mentioned, the vegetative buffer is really important, but I think it's important to know what do we mean by that and when? Are we going to allow 15, 20 years for the trees to get large enough that the neighbors aren't going to see it? Or do we want there to be a vegetative buffer on year one, or year six months out? And so I think just saying that we want there to be limited visibility by when, because I think that as a neighbor, actually as, as a resident of Hopkinton that is driving by a recently cleared tree line, watching a farm, uh, one acre plot go up, it's quite striking, and it's going to be a long time, and I'm sure you drive by that one as well, Mr. Lendall, if you can. So it's quite striking, it'll be a long time before we won't see those solar panels. So I think we need to be specific. And, um, I know Al, we always talk about this every time, this sort of goes to the wildlife, is making sure that it's six inches off the ground, but if we're going to ask that to every applicant, we might as well have it stated in our ordinance, so. And this, my last one regarding is, um, sort of goes to the Charleston proposed solar ordinance, where they wanted to include, um, pollinator grass mixes specifically, and they had that included specifically into their ordinances, and this is the idea that, so you're going to clear cut all these, these forests, and then you're going to plant a grass, but could you also plant something that would bring something good to the bees, and allow for more pollination, pollinators to come in? And so that seems as a way of sort of softening the environmental impact, if, as you would say, maybe, um, but, so I'd like some, some thought around, um, the type of planting that we want to have. So those were, those are my concerns.
Okay, so thanks for your time. Anyone else in the planning board?
Is that going to go in on my head? Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I've read everything that was provided to me, but yeah, uh, the only things that I really took, I wouldn't say offense to, but I noticed were somewhat lacking, was it's not so much just what the solar panels are doing negatively, we're not really focusing on, again, this literature, we're not focusing on what they're doing positively. How much are they eliminating from what's being generated in Johnson? At the, at the rice plant, its natural gas is pretty clean, but it still pumps out hydrocarbons. Plainfield, on the trash burn of the new one, it burns all junk for, those old buildings and stuff, that pumps out a lot. So for every megawatt that they're making, the solar panels are making megawatts, uh, much reduced rate as far as the carbon footprint. Wind turbines, the big industrial ones, we've all seen the ones in Warwick on the side of the highway, and personally, I think they're cute when they're babies. The big ones are 400 feet high, they swing 325 feet radius. The 12 miles, our house in Maine is 12 miles from a wind farm, kind of clear night, you can hear them. And it's, you know, distracting, it upsets animals, I'm sure. They only make 2.5 megawatts, the big ones. And it doesn't take, I don't know how many solar panels, the one that Mr. Trambino proposed is 1.3 megawatts on his property of five acres, so that's, that's another offset. Other than that, the ordinances that I've read, I'm happy with, both previous speakers had some very good points about passage for the animals, and vegetative area, and, uh, that's pretty much what I stand. You know, the ordinances we have are pretty good. I agree with Al, some of them could use a little more teeth in them, so we should look at that, but other than that, I think we're headed in the right direction, just haven't quite accomplished what everybody wants to see yet. Okay, again, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. You're welcome.
I think I probably, I've summed it up very well.
So what I, I think what I do before we kind of get into some of the specifics is, if anyone out in the audience, I guess, that anything that's been said by the planning board members, do you have any concerns? Yays, nays, uh, please come to the podium and state your case, and move back to that into our ultimate crafting of thinking, or to the existing ordinance.
My name is Tim Bresher, I live on Maxon Hill Road. As you know, one of the proposed sites is Maxon Hill Road, and, uh, I'd like you to take into consideration that the main thing that a solar panel needs is all the sky. And rather than how many trees can you cut down, make that number be zero, trees generate oxygen, we need that, we all breathe it every day. There's too much pavement north of us, that isn't generating anything but bad runoff of water. So if you've got a nice flat piece of land, no ledge underneath it, that's going to be disturbed by blasting or pounding, not going to disturb an aquifer, got a clear view of the sky, can have a buffer or vegetation put around it afterwards, so that people don't have to look at these ugly things forever, that's a good site for solar. If you've got a hill that's going to runoff into a major throughway of our community, that has loads and loads and loads of trees on it, that has parcels of wetlands on it, that has ledge beneath it that's going to get pounded into six to eight feet down, that our underground water runs through, these people have LLCs proposing to do this, I'm sure everybody in this room knows what an LLC stands for, limited liability. I want somebody to stand up, raise their hand, and say, "I'm the guy you sue if your well goes dry." They won't do it. I'd like you to take those kinds of things into consideration, that some sites, just because it's open property, aren't good sites for solar. Thank you.
Very good.
Oh, and we have a lot of deer that wander through that property on a regular basis. They're beautiful, and they ought to be able to lot, wander through our will, we just try to keep them out of the flop. Six inches isn't enough, by the way.
I just want to make a very great, uh, suggestion again, is, uh, if you work on a more diverse mix of possibilities, uh, for alternative energy, the conservation commission is giving the animals support in, uh, wind energy, uh, if you look at some of these projects that have been proposed, and think, okay, we clear 100 acres, or we put up three wind turbines that require pretty minimal amount of clearing, you know, heat or wind turbines, so, uh, those are ways that we, you could custom fit a project to a site, certainly for the farms, the idea of putting up a wind turbine, still being able to farm, you know, follow the farm, your entire property, and not, and not give it up to the, to the solar, is, uh, something that just makes a huge, uh, difference in the efficiency of what farms can do, and a site like, uh, at Exit 1 there, uh, if there were a couple of wind turbines there, something, they wouldn't require all that cutting. they wouldn't require all that cutting.
Thanks, Harvey. Appreciate it.
My name is Cassandra Meyer O'Grain, and I happen to live up on Hopkinton Hill Road, so I'm in a newer development. I have to say, yes, I'm Mark's wife. Sorry to all of you. My husband Greg O'Grain tends to be pretty vocal. Sorry. But I think it's really important to come forward this evening, because Hopkinton is a true gem. Whether it's open space, unforested land, or the beautiful trees that we have, it is what draws us here. That's what actually convinced my husband to come here, and this is why we're so proud to be residents of Hopkinton. The trees are magical. We have great current owls here. In my neighborhood, even though it's newer, we still have that wind and buffer. We have woodcocks. We have upwards of six male woodcocks every year that come to us. There are people that pay money to go see them, and all I have to do is walk around my neighborhood. We also have the threatened species of eastern box turtle. These are things that I really think that we should take into consideration when we're talking about deforesting, even if it's thirty of seventy acres that are on the table in this case. I'm all for green energy. I work for a nature center. But I think it's very prudent for us to take the time and talk through these things, and what are we willing to allow as residents? What do we want to see looking out our windows? But also, what about the wildlife that comes through here? We're on the Atlantic Flyway. You know, there are migratory birds that are coming through here. They're now going to lose all that forested area that they need to be able to either rest in our trees and enjoy the summers with us, or head north. Again, we just need to be very thoughtful about what we're wanting to see. Maybe if it's establishing other parameters of if there is a ledge, and if there aren't, you know, a certain percentage of trees to come down, so that we're able to maintain this gem, so that we get to enjoy it for years to come.
Thanks. Harvey, something?
Yes, John. Hello. I guess when I, when I think about solar renewable energy, when I think about our town, I think we should probably find ways to incentivize building on land that is not easy. Right? It's really easy to cut down any trees. There's no reason why we should take the path of least resistance. One of the articles mentioned that, you know, Massachusetts provides financial incentives. I never realized that beyond the town's capabilities, but there could possibly be some other legislative framework. So for example, University of Rhode Island is building solar panels on a capillary. They're going to, basically, instead of driving those pines into the ground, they're going to build them into concrete. And so it's a super fun site. You can't build anything there, ever. So they're going to capitalize on it by putting removal engine there. I know that this uptown facility we talked about at length has a possible location, but how it's too expensive to run the wire? Well, it's too expensive to run the wire because it's cheaper to cut down eighty acres of trees. If it costs a lot more money to cut down trees, it would be quite affordable to run that wire. And lastly, that brings up other, other ways to sort of implement green energy. So I, regardless of the appetite of, you know, taller structures and being able to see the solar panels, I see rooftops all the time. They're made of asphalt shingles. They're not particularly beautiful, but I'm used to the way they look. Telephone poles, also pretty ugly, but I'm used to the way they look. When I think about sort of what makes Hopkinton, Hopkinton, it's not about the shadow of the trees. It's, it's about what people and what the community have done to it. So it's the way we've shaped our landscape that makes it charming. And so now we have a decision where we can choose to shape our landscape in a way that suits us. And are we going to do it by cutting down trees and replacing them with solar pavement? Or are we going to do it by encouraging people to build solar panels on top of school parking lots, on tops of buildings? Where, yeah, sure, maybe I can see them, but at least they're out of the way. And I'd much rather, when I drive down the hill on Main Street in Oak Valley, and I see the steeples, you know, emerge from the tree lines, I'd much rather see green energy implemented in a way that sort of coexists with the landscape and helps people to survive and thrive in the area, rather than either shun it or to, you know, give up the natural resources in favor of it. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, John. Appreciate it.
My name is Rick Mandel. I own a company called Sage of Armel. I've been in front of you folks at one time over the past years. I've been asked to speak tonight by Mr. Del Licario and Solar Renewable Energy, not about any specific sites, but about proposals for the boards to consider thoughtful solar development in the town, echoing much of what we've heard here this evening. I have a handout. If you'd like to check, just a second. If you'd like my computer, I can. Should I, can?
Yeah, it's about the planning board and that's.
Okay. So. Yep. Thank you. Twenty five. Did you want to hand it this one? I'll give you a hand with your handout. Okay. Again, I haven't been asked to speak on it about any particular proposed solar project, but just some food for thought, as you folks consider what you might expect from solar farms here in town. Those on a commercial scale, those residential scale. I was first asked to look at what has been our tree husbandry here in Southern New England, or lack thereof, since the town was settled, right? I think it's fair to say that neither Hopkinton, nor nearly no other community here in Rhode Island, still has a version of primary forest. Ninety-nine percent of our forests have been harvested and harvested on multiple occasions since seven of that in the city. That said, not to diminish their importance or value, especially when we look around town, most of the tree canopy that we see is less than a hundred years old. As part of our, sort of, look at Hopkinton and the surrounding community, when we look at historic aerial photographs from the thirties, when we started taking aerial photographs up until present, we've actually had a net gain in forest cover over the last hundred-plus years. Our peak, if you will, was likely the peak of deforestation here in Hopkinton, as well as surrounding communities, reached a deforestation peak right around the Civil War. Since then, the town has largely become very forested. Now, it's been patchwork as we've evolved from the here, a raring community, to a community that we enjoy today. But generally speaking, we have the most forest here we've had in over a hundred and fifty years. With that forest cover, believe it or not, there are negatives and positives associated with that. We, as a community, experience a more diverse and more robust wildlife habitat when we have a patchwork of environmental communities, forests, fields, farms, open spaces. And that value has been called out specifically, as many of you may be aware of, the, the recently passed Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge System up and down the east coast here in New England. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Great Thicket, it specifically seeks to conserve, manage, and maintain shrubland and young forest habitats, which provide food and shelter for New England cottontails, American woodcock, rough grouse, monarch butterfly, box turtles, and scores of other shrubland-dependent species. They contribute to habitat and population objectives for numerous declining priority breeding land birds identified in the New England Mid-Atlantic Bird Conservation Regional Plan of Thirty, including the prairie wolverine, blue winged wolverine, et cetera. So believe it or not, as our forest cover thickens over these decades, it actually, we actually lose habitat for those now rare and/or endangered species, such as the box turtle, and woodcock, and eastern bluebird, by not having a patchwork of environment. So we propose to you for consideration that you have an opportunity to realize some of the, the, the goals, particularly of the Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge, a piece of which crosses the southern and the Hopkinton and much of the coast here in Southern Rhode Island. So you have an opportunity to actually create and utilize a solar farm as a habitat for these rare and endangered species. You can specify those plant types, those shrub types, those nesting boxes, those portals in the fence that allow the cottontail, as well as the box turtle, to utilize this oasis, if you will, right? Again, food for thought, food for consideration. Another benefit to a solar farm such as this with appropriate fencing is, and I know we do love our deer, another benefit to a properly fenced solar farm is to actually keep deer out. Deer, as we know, love gardens, love shrubbery, and unfortunately, what they end up doing is they eat many of the plant species that these rare and endangered species need, in which to thrive. So a properly designed solar farm can actually be, again, an oasis, if you will, for rare endangered species, and be supportive of some of the goals that the National Refuge has recently espoused, and Hopkinton being one of those communities here in Southern Rhode Island. At the end of, what I've also included herein, again, proposals for thought, we would suggest that the town consider requesting or requiring, as part of a thoughtful process in which you would consider full of solar farms, that they include project wildlife enhancements in form of enhancement plans, as well as a forestry restoration plan at the end life of a solar farm. Be very specific about that. What is it that you might want in thirty years at the end of the life of this particular solar farm? Unfortunately, many of us in this room probably won't be around to enjoy the end of the life of a solar farm, but it doesn't mean you can't plant for it now. And again, be very, very, very specific about what you want that to look like. Within an active management plan for a solar farm, again, thinking we're taking advantage of this serendipitous opportunity to utilize a solar farm as a wildlife habitat oasis, part of that process is the plant selection, proper fencing design, proper drainage, proper site selection, there's things such as mowing practice selection. Believe it or not, waiting a week can mean life or death of a lot of rare and endangered species. So you want to be mindful about that in your plans. We would also suggest that as part of your solar farm consideration, utilizing nesting boxes both in the farm, as well as around the farm, as well as in the surrounding forest. Again, it's a dynamic environment that you have an opportunity to take advantage of, as opposed to just having one where you don't have that kind of a criteria. Every community is unique, right? Our environment from one end of the town is very different than the other end of the town. So you want to be very thoughtful about how you go about planning these types of farms. I mentioned fencing, and how to be mindful about fencing, what to keep in, what to keep out, what to let come and go. Again, herein, I've presented just some, a five thousand foot view of proposed ideas of what you might want to consider as you consider what might the rules want to be for your future solar farms here in Commando. I've provided some historic aerial photos at the back of the document that demonstrates the reforestation, if you will, of the town through time. I have lots of other resources I can share with you on that. But that's essentially what we wanted to present to you folks today, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
I need some time to go through some of your material we just got tonight. I have a question for this gentleman, the solar.
Wind thicket around the skyline where your solar panels?
Again, you've got to properly design it, panel height relative to your plant species, where you want to be in the farm, what makes sense to be in the farm, given where it is in town. You know, are you, are you close to the coast, or are you for an area? Every, every site's going to be different. You can appreciate that.
That I can, but with some of those species that you're referencing, the eastern box turtle, for example, has about a one acre radius of its habitat. So deforestation could essentially kill the species before you make their happy habitat, and you'd have to make sure that you're using native plants in order to encourage those native species to stay, because that's what they rely on, which would be the same for pollinators. Again, all pollinators are fed by native species than random species.
And as, to your point, we would suggest that for the forest buffer that you might leave around a development, why not consider removal of invasive species within that forest even in there? Let's support the native species and, and keep them whole and get rid of the non-natives. You're not going to please everybody, right? It's just, but.
I'm on a course of solar. I'd have to put solar on my house.
But we can do it as smartly as possible. Yes, sir.
Yes, Harvey. Did you include in there any examples of where you've already done this successfully?
We've had examples that I've pulled from the literature. I've worked with a number of wildlife habitat folks that we've done this type of work with over the past. More restoration of contaminated sites.
So, and are you putting these paintings in space between the panels? Or are you keeping this to the buffer around the perimeter?
You can do it between the panels. Again, it's about height, you know, how high are your panels versus what kind of plant species do you want?
And so we have a project that's been approved in town for Southern Sky. And none of this was proposed at that time. Why, why was it proposed that would be done to benefit the town?
I wasn't involved in that particular project. I can't speak to it. I've recently been asked to talk about this in terms of.
So this is a new idea for them? It's a.
This is a new idea for.
Have they ever done any of this?
Not too much.
So it sounds like to me, maybe they at least are getting some, their understanding of suppression coming up, but they're not going to get away with, you know, just doing it, clear cutting anymore, so maybe they're understanding that they need to sweep the tide a little bit. Just an assumption.
Sir. When you talk about native species.
Sir, when you talk about native species that are in less forested area, those native species are used to more sunlight. Solar panels need that sunlight. It's like putting up an umbrella over a plant that needs the sunlight. How much success do you think you'd have doing something like that? I know I wouldn't do it, I was going to plant some roses. I wouldn't put an umbrella over it.
Right. Is this a number of examples of how there's blend, good planting in the farm?
And then you get into use and ease of maintenance. One of the big things that I heard planning or talking about at one of the hearings that I went to was who's going to be responsible for maintenance? What if you don't maintain it? Does the town get reimbursed for having to maintain it? The concept of thicket, to me, means art of walk. Am I wrong?
You're not, you're not wrong. Again, the Great Thicket goals are such that you're trying to foster plant species for those rare and endangered.
Believe me, I'm not saying that the goals are at fault. I'm saying the reasonableness of achieving those goals in the environment that we're talking about is suspect, at least in my own informed mind.
It's been done in Canada. Yes, ma'am.
I want to know about the ones like, you know, the last meeting we came to was talking about, you know, all these different kinds of bushes that he had gone out and he'd seen on the property and how this thing was going to replace this way system. What about, you know, the ones you haven't seen, like the honeysuckle, the blueberry bushes? What are you going to do about the lady's slippers, things that are endangered? You've got creeping jammie, you've got princess fine. All these things you don't see because they are at ground level and this is what you're going to be digging up. How can you replace what you're digging up?
That you haven't even listed because you didn't see it.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand you didn't, but an unqualified landscaper...
Right, you go ahead, sitting up in the corner, said, "Oh, thank you, you write some down." Well, it's not the idea of writing down because we've lived in one spot in forty years. You know, you're supposed to know what these plants are. You can't replace what you don't know about the base. Do you know what I'm saying? Now, you're saying, you know, you're going to do it on the basis of, you know, what you've got, and you're going to balance it out. And you can't balance out what you don't see.
Right, you can do a finite assessment, as you would in any project.
And how long do these solar farms last? We talked with a few electricians and they said after five, ten years, if you put solar in your house, the panels are already losing energy. So if they're losing energy, why are we going to cut all our trees and stuff down to put something up that National Bridge only uses seven percent of to have everyone take it? And that the size of the panels are going to change, and Home Depot is going to have these systems that you will be able to have installed in your own house, and batteries in your cellar. So if we're going to be able to, why are we going to tie everything down? It makes no sense to me.
I'll leave our old guy, I'll be like...
But do you know what I'm saying?
But you've got an LLC after your age.
Don't we all?
No, I don't.
I don't either.
I'm just...
If I do something wrong, I get sued.
Anything else for the environmental engineer, or alternative environmental? Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else out there wishing to weigh in on what you've been saying already? This is great.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Hansen. I'm president of Millstone Engineering. I've been before the council and support of a couple of solar projects being considered. I'm also here this evening, I'm here this evening representing Tony Delacarrio and Wadonsoo Renewable Energy. He asked me to speak on his behalf regarding potential thoughts and revised ordinances for solar farms. Just a little bit of background on myself personally. I was the chairman of the Situate Plan Commission for twenty-five years and I could pretty understand ordinances and implementation and trying to craft ordinances that work for the community in which they're in. Mr. Delacarrio sympathized with that when he discussed, make your best effort to craft an ordinance and then it's implemented and you get results that you really didn't anticipate because it would back into best order here this evening. Someone discussing. Just wanted to reiterate what Mick Mendel spoke of in terms of forestry. As you know, Situate Reservoir, Wajabi, and the property is forest in support of the Situate Reservoir. And I had researched and shared with Tom Planner, if you would like, this document, the Situate Reservoir, the worship property forest stewardship grant. And it outlines how this forest water supply maintains the forest surrounding the reservoir. And to paraphrase it, it's a no-cut policy of forest is not doing anybody any good. It doesn't do the forest any good and it does not do the habitat, the wildlife habitat, any good. It doesn't diversify, it needs to be maintained. And that's just what I wanted to offer to the board this evening, that a no-cut policy, just leaving the forest alone, isn't in the best interest of everybody, at any rate, really. They need to be maintained and diversified within the town. If you like, I can share this, but the plan has some good information on that as you move forward and that implementation of new practices. Can you implement it as you move forward?
Thanks, appreciate it. Give that to Charlie.
The LLC still would be personally, okay, and a lot of times, you know, they stay above these projects for the long term. So a couple of questions, everyone here, not to talk about specific projects, to answer some of the questions. So one of the questions was the output of these panels. We use manufacturers to guarantee the output of these panels for twenty-five years, and they have to be guaranteed, otherwise you'd never get a finance. Okay, these projects would never see the light of day and you wouldn't be able to get secure financing for them because, you know, banks are very, lending investment institutions are very cautious about, you know, cash for life, the life of the panels. You don't have to pay off the last, you lend thirty million dollars. It's supposed to, you know, sanitize for a twenty-five, thirty-year period. The banker looks, gets the money back. So all kinds of opinion letters, all kinds of engineering certificates that are, that have to be presented in order to finance one of these projects. One of the most important things, other than output, is the maintenance because a banker who looks at these projects and finances wants to understand more than you, that these late projects will be well-maintained, okay, and they'll be maintained for the life of the project, okay? So the lender, okay, has very strict requirements, guidelines, and we have to put together very substantial information about how these projects will be maintained and they'll be run to make sure that they yield the energy, that they have to, in order to pay the mortgage, the investor, back to the investors, okay? So my idea today was to bring some people forward, right? I've heard a lot of talk, negative talk about cutting trees, what it means. And I was hoping to introduce a discussion about what the developer can do to help take the strain out of that and actually do positive things. And we can, you know, by hiring a company like Sage Environmental to do an analysis of habitat, do a plan that basically I would, I would be for agreeing to do in conjunction with decommissioning plan to do a reforestation, some type of reforestation plan that looks at, that puts together a plan today and puts together, sets aside, money's in escrow. So thirty years from now, that money gains interest. We have a plan that today we thoughtfully thought out and that at the decommissioning, at the point of decommissioning, you have the money and the plan that's already been approved. Even if we're not here, the town will be here, you know, for around two hundred years, I don't know. And that plan can be implemented. And that money, I mean, if you put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the town today, in thirty years, it could be a hundred and five, six hundred thousand, okay, to deal with that issue. And so I think also to make an investment in some of the plants around the solar farm. So as you're building the solar farm, you can actually plant different species of bushes and, you know, that are needed by the habitat to sustain the environment. So a plan could be developed. And so this, I'm suggesting the coexistence between the environmentalists and the concerns that have been raised to deal with some of these issues. Because I think it's a good project. At the end of the day, the solar farm does sequester a tremendous amount of carbon and it's good for the environment. The governor has set a lot of goals about what she's looking for in terms of state or without. And I know Massachusetts has developed some solar farms and I think they've done over two thousand megawatts of solar in Massachusetts already. So we're not even anywhere near that. And I think, I think we'll be lucky if we do five hundred in state or without, personally, because it's a small state. So I don't see two thousand megawatts, even though I think the governor's talked about a goal.
Thousand.
Something, something over that, okay? So I'm talking as a developer who wants to try to work with the town in trying to address the very concern everybody's been talking to the town.
Thanks, Mr. Carter. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak in this conference tonight? Okay, having heard none, then I'll refer to the council, who wants to start?
I think that, you know, all of these materials are a lot of very good ideas, I think. Setting aside them out, you have parcel land, you want a big solar farm. You can only use so much of the land. Defining those sorts of things, you know, as output, a lot of coverage. Fencing issues, the fire ordinance needs to be looked at so that regulations that are important are in act as well, or they, but they need regulations, apparently, a little bit tighter. The blasting issue is something that we've never talked about, but it's a problem. And people have blasted and trying to find the water and cause a problem for somebody else because their all-over-part, you know, ledge was way down. So I think there's been a lot of good suggestions tonight from everybody. And I think that, I think we are at a point where we can amend our ordinance. Obviously, we'll have to have another workshop where we can nail some of these down, work with staff, and get some of these things in an ordinance and start from there. So I think a lot of good ideas have been brought up tonight. So we can tinker with it. Like we said, our ordinance gets done, you're all set. But there's always some little thing or more things that need to be done to fix it, make it better. So I'm okay with that.
Excellent. Tom?
Ali's had made a comment about you guys would get together and craft certain, tighten up the ordinances during your opening statement. That would be really helpful for us. We don't deal with it like you guys do. You guys work with it day in and day out. It's just we have been going through. So those things that you see, I liked your synopsis on this, the problems you're saying, also with you. If you guys could just delve into it a little bit deeper, I would really be interested in your thoughts on this a little bit more. I mean, this is just basically generalized and I understand it. And that's what I was looking at. This is what I used when I was going through all the other stuff, going back to your two things and comparing notes. But yeah, if you guys could just give us a little bit more definitive what you're looking for also.
Sure, if I may. So perhaps a thought that I'll leave with you, you can decide that if you directly support it, is perhaps to come back to you with an amended set of ordinances, with our ideas actually inserted into the language so that you have something concrete to deal with.
And if you could, I'm also taking into consideration some of the comments from the folks in the audience, such as the environmental engineers, the neighbors, you know. Anything that you think is of value, incorporate that as well.
Well, I presume that the revisions to that ordinance will probably be the subject of a planning board workshop, at which time anyone would like to raise something forward, we'd be happy to introduce it. So if that sounds like a good idea?
Yeah, sounds good.
Oh, yeah. Well, I want to start with this right off the bat. I don't have any real qualms with the governor. But when the governor says she wants a thousand megawatts, but I believe by 2020, is that correct? She hasn't offered one acre of state land, not one, to put up solar panels. Not one. She wants the towns to do it. Oh, that's fine. Wants the towns to solve the impact of this, but not state land. Oh, have a permit, we touch up Cape or up in Buberville, all that land up there? Nope, have not. So that's one thing. I think, I think at some point, especially in this town, I think there's, the statement, too much of a good thing takes effect. And we recently approved a major solar farm over on Ninety-One. We're going to lose thirty-two thousand trees for that solar farm. And it was that or the ability of somebody to go in there and they only go in there and put a development in there, and the trees were going to be cut, apparently, almost all of them. We're going to be cutting it out for the housing. So I thought, well, okay, if we're going to do it, we got to do it. And it is clean energy, and I like clean energy, I really do. But there's, there's a limit on how much we want to have in this town. I think that a lot of people, and I don't know what the figure is, but I think it's going to be the majority of the people live in this town. Live in this town because they like this town, they like living in this kind of a town, not Princeton, not Warwick, not Providence. They don't live down here for the taxes. They don't, "Oh, boy, let's go to the park and get nice little taxes." They don't, they don't live here for the public offerings. I mean, you know, we have public water, a little bit of Tupperboro Valley. We have a public sewer. Don't have any banks in the town, so we don't have a lot of public offerings or institutional offerings. I mean, we got, you know, Richmond's got Stop &amp; Shop. We don't have a grocery store. We got a couple of gas stations, that's about it. So, but people live here because they can forego that kind of stuff. They don't need that kind of stuff because you know what they like? They like to drive by dairy farms. There's not many of those left, there's probably one left. They like to drive by and see woodlands. So let's keep that in mind, that people here like what they've got here and that's why they're here, not because of these other things. So I think there's a couple of points I just want to make. Blasting is absolutely one, and we can control the blasting situation by absolutely saying that anybody that wants to put solar panels in has to get additional approving through an ordinance saying that, hey, no blasting without permission. That's what we're going to say, we're going to say that in the ordinance. And that's how we solve that blasting, just like that. You know, you want to put an acre in here or twenty acres in there and we give you the blessing to do it, fine. But no blasting without permission. So they've got to make sure, they're going to do the eligibility to make sure there's no levers underneath there, that's like. The other thing is that we also have to, if we approve even a one-acre solar panel operation, and I'll give you an example. We've got to, we've got to say, where are you going to put this? Because I don't want to see it. I don't think, I don't think neighbors want to see it. I buy Reynolds Farm and sit right there next to Route Three. That's a shame. That's a real shame. They could have put it off the back someplace, over in Ninety-Five someplace. Still got the same sunlight, you know, but they put it right next to Route Three. It looks miserable. It's really a shame. It's a shame that farms are closed down now. So those are the things right off the top. I think that Amy, you brought a lot, a lot of good things. You said, one of the things is that no more than forty... I'll tell you, I'll tell you how to get around this. No more than forty percent of any forest in the... No more than 40% of any forest area shall be cleared for the purpose of installing solar installation. Well, somebody, somebody owns 50 acres, and they think, okay, listen, I can really clear it. It's all forested, but you know, if I clear this, I can put some solar panels in here. I'm going to set my lip up on the solar panels until I clear it all off. So the owner clears it off, and then he comes in and says, well, it's all cleared off. I didn't clear the solar panels, but jeez, if these guys came up and offered me solar panels, I was going to put corn in there, I was going to put cattle in there. So, you know, there's ways of getting around the 40%. They can be cleared before the solar operation gets into effect. I do think there should be a limitation of acreage as far as how many acres of a, of a specific, you know, if you've got 100 acres, I think this 30% of the acreage is fine for solar panels. I think maybe the rest should be given over to the town, or an easement should be, should be placed on that property, saying, hey, no further development on that property. Don't be putting in 30 acres of solar panels in here, and then, you know, five acres down the pipe saying, hey, listen, we'd like to put another 30 acres in. No, I think, I think the town should have control over the rest of that acreage. I think it's absolute crime that we cut down trees. We had, we had expert witness, I smile when I say expert witness, because I'm sure she was, telling me that, I believe the figure was five times the, the carbon footprint that solar panels will, will increase the amount of carbon kicking up and taking out of the air by five times as much as the trees that were cut down to put those solar panels in. And I told her, I hate to say sarcastically, I told someone sarcastically, I said, well, jeez, you know, let's get all the trees down, let's put solar panels in, because then we can really do a good job about the carbon footprint, which I don't think she appreciated, but that's, you know, that's another thing. You don't give me that stuff about, oh, it's better, it's better than the trees, and the trees are doing okay job. Solar panels will, will stop the carbon footprint from coming up in Providence or whatever the energy producing installations are. So that's, that's another thing. Yeah, I, I think that we've got to understand that there's certain places that are really good in this town, still good for this town, to put a solar operation or a wind turbine. And I think that we have to understand that we have a comprehensive plan in this town, and there's a need for that comprehensive plan, because that lets people know that whether they live on Canyon Hill Trail or they live up on Collins Road or wherever they may be, and the land across from them is a residential, a piece of property. They're thinking, okay, at worst, I'm going to see some houses over there. I'm not going to see a wind turbine that's 415 feet high. I'm not going to see, you know, 16 or 20 acres worth of solar panels, even though they plant some other way, they're going to be tall in about 15 to 20 years, and they're going to be about that tall when they put them in. So I think there's an understanding when you're working in a residential area, that the, the area around you, the property around you is going to stay residential. If you buy a house in a commercial and industrial zoned area, we have zoning maps in this town. You also have to understand that, jeez, you might have a 7-Eleven or a Cumberland Farms or a gas station put up next to you, because that's what it is. It's industrial, it's commercial. But, you know, I sympathize for, for people, you know, down here on Exit 1, for example, you said is an example, who expected at the worst there were going to be houses put up across the street from them, but right now all they see is trees. And all of a sudden, that's not going to happen, because they want us to change it from residential to commercial slash industrial, but for solar panels only. I don't think that's what they, they expected. Anyhow, that's, that's the situation. I'm not going to get into the specifics down there. I do think that we're being inundated, and that's just an easy word to use, overwhelmed with solar projects in this town, anyways from one acre to multi-acreage areas. And I'm a little, I'm more than, I'm very disturbed. This is going on in a town that we didn't expect that. We didn't expect to live in a town with solar panels all over the place in open areas, and it's, and it's to my house, or your house, or whatever.
Yeah, sorry, speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go for it.
That's okay, I just, no, I just want to thank everyone for their suggestions tonight in the audience. Thank the planning board for their concerns, bringing them forward to us. I guess going forward, we'll just try and, it seems abundantly clear that we have to try and amend responsibly, amend this ordinance to kind of move forward and take everyone's concerns into, into play. So I think that's what we'll do. I think maybe the next step, as Tom had asked, is planning board can maybe add some verbiage into the ordinances to reflect some of the concerns, and then have your workshop, and then bring some, I guess, draft format to us at some point, and then we'll look to tweak it, and maybe have another workshop as a joint workshop perhaps. So I guess, but anyway, yes, sir?
Could I just then suggest that this takes time, this process involvement, and during that timeframe, no new solar projects be approved until the ordinance is crafted and they have to conform with the ordinance.
That's a legal question there.
Generally speaking, that is illegal to do that.
Green law, right?
Yeah, because an application is filed, it's subject to the ordinances that exist as of the time of, of the application being filed. Once it's in the chute, so to speak, it deals with the laws that exist at that time.
Unless it's a moving target, you never get anything worked through.
I like that.
You don't sell a beer either.
You're right.
Anything new? Not because we have the application there yet, anything more till we get.
We have to look into that. Why, why would we do that?
Yeah.
I asked, as a solicitor, can we put a moratorium on any new solar projects? Anything that is now in the hopper or has their applications in are going to follow the ordinance as written out. Anything new, and I remember back, when we did that for housing, we put a moratorium on building of housing until we got our heads around what we were going to do. And that would be something that we may be able to put a moratorium on any new solar projects until we get this finished.
We have, we have, we have a limitation on legal licenses, right? My pardon? I mean, legal licenses.
I just want to, I just want to point out that the state has passed legislation that in some ways, for example, the tangible property tax applicable to solar, solar panels, and farms, that's solely in the authority of the state. So when I said a minute ago that we have to look at the specifics, I meant it to say in broad terms, we can do it. I would suggest it's more complicated than that, because there's a, there's state and perhaps even federal laws that may supersede the discretion the town has for this particular type of thing. So it'll depend, we can certainly look into that further, but to suggest tonight that we can or can't do it, I honestly don't know. And I think it's more complicated than that.
Just a suggestion. Yeah, if, if I may, and I'd certainly respect your opinion in this regard. This, this kind of activity has been undertaken previously. My only, the caveat that I believe comes with it is that this is for a limited time. And it has to acknowledge the fact that municipalities often need, if you will, a little break in the action to pull their thoughts together. I can't believe that we have laws that would prevent us from creating a short-term, wholly, the activity, if you will, to get our collective housing work. So I would only ask that perhaps research and advice.
That's all I'm saying, you might be right. I'm just saying it dovens in the details particularly, and just like.
Okay, yes, Stephen?
I would, I'm in favor of no blasting alone. Perry, I don't think we should allow blasting to make these projects at all. So that, that.
I was shocked to read the article that they were actually doing blasting.
I don't think we should allow it. If they find, if they have a problem, we can deal with it other ways. I want to mention briefly the landfill, the subtown landfill, that is usable. It's just makes less money than, than other projects that are closer to electricity or wire, we have to go down that road, which electricity is not conducive to doing landfill at this time. So that would be an added cost, but it is usable, so I just want to mention that. The lot coverage, I think, I want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Basically, we want a little piece of land, and there's only a certain percent that can be used for solar, whether it's forested or fields or whatever, only a certain percent of the land. That's how I look at it, is that what you want? Yeah, yeah.
Usable, as long as we remember that lot coverage addresses all the structures on a piece of property. So that means that if you, let's say your lot coverage spec is, I'll just pick it up, 20%. If you fill your parcel with 20% of solar panels, you're not allowed to put anything else on that site in terms of structures.
Yeah. How much you can put like a barn or a building, right?
So we would need to be clear on that. Structure is a structure, and you only get to put a certain percentage.
So Al, would that mean it also includes the area between the individual panels?
Well, that is a very perceptive question. That would be devil in the detail, and that's because it's old. So I'm sure that one side of the argument is going to say, no, I only want to include the panels. The other side of the argument is going to say, no, I want the access road, the space around the panel, what's inside the fencing. That's a, that's a matter of how we write the ordinance. We'll seek comment on that and offer something to you for consideration.
Sounds good. Does the planning board need?
Could we, could we ask, could we have a conservation easement on the rest of that piece of property? Just like we do if we're coastal zoning, where we have.
There's enough space, I guess.
Why would you want?
Well, that we, that we have, we have absolute control over whether anything else goes in there at some point.
Well, that was one of my concerns also, was I was thinking of once you have a 200-acre farm, and they put in a marriage, maybe a solar plan, and it's been in it for five years, now the son is getting married, he wants to cut off a beach.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that that should be allowed. I mean, your basis was set on certain priorities.
200 acres.
And that's what needs to stay at. You can't sublight it after that and sell it off. I mean, that's, that's kind of mean squirrely, I guess.
No. So that's exactly what could happen, too?
Oh, definitely.
You can't blame your father for wanting to sell something to his kids there.
But when, when they do that, that has to be a forethought in their minds that, hey, I may give this to a kid, so let's not add that whole acreage in to the package deal for the solar.
Can I, I thought you did that. One of the reasons that we're allowing farms to put up one to three acres with us because they're a farm. What happens if 10 years, 10 years down the pipe, the guy says, jeez, I want to get out of farming business, I think I'm just going to sell my name to a developer. Now, I'm going to farm any more, but those solar panels are still there. What are we going to, are you going to tell me, you can't sell it, you're going to keep on farming? You can't do that.
I was wanting to.
That money.
One of the things that Al, one of the things that I'm concerned with is cycling, seeing these things. I mean, when we were doing, when we first got on the council, we were developing the Exit 1 area, and that was one of the biggest things we had. Yeah, we want your business, but I don't want to see it. All right, that's exactly what it is. I don't mind taking them to revenue and all that stuff, but I don't want to see it. I don't want it sitting.
Not a huddle, Steph. Let's, we're right down there, and that's a beautiful building, it's, it's got a lot of landscape and stuff, but you don't even know it's there.
People don't know.
No, they don't.
No one knows, and there's so many businesses in there.
And this is what I said about Reynolds Farm, you see, you see the panel.
I know, I can believe that.
Pull back by the ways of place while we see it.
They did that really fast and in the very, very, very beginning.
I'm a little surprised.
There's supposed to be trees. Well, there will be, it's not.
Well, wow.
Let's see, that's my comment from earlier today.
They're not putting trees.
It's going to get, you know, that it takes.
I thought they were going to put it across the street in the field.
Did they ever show you where they were going to put it?
Yes.
And you said, jeez, that's a great place, where is it, Route 3?
We were following our ordinances, Mr. Hammond, and so we were.
The electric lines are right there.
Yes, that was, I mean, that's why we're here. So.
So it takes a time to complete the project.
Right, it needs to be a timeline. And so we're here because, you know, as a planning board, our remit is a comprehensive plan and the ordinances, and so that's why.
And the ordinance, though, the ordinance doesn't give you any control over the location, right? Have you seen?
No, it's just lines, we can do trees, you know, screening.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's something that you are interested in putting in to amend and time, time frame, time frame.
Yeah, location, location, time frame.
We've got a lot of bases covered, I think, so move along, possibly modify. Thanks, anyone else, any final thoughts, yes, sir?
Will the planning workshop be advertised on the website?
It will be, yes.
Not that we don't like it.
So can you use the message that the town uses, the, you want to spray, you want to do the project, you're really lying through it, and anything new, and the other stuff, can they hold or pallet?
Yes, yeah.
Anything.
It stands out.
I'm sure Jim, you have this, of course, your ordinance already on your, the whole entire ordinance.
Any final thoughts on anyone? Having heard none, which will return? All those who came?
Those workshops, first, those workshops. Yeah, those workshops.